All right, welcome everyone. Today is May the 12th. It's 5:31 PM and we are continuing with budget review. 2022-2023 budget schedule, specifically the study session. Our Controller Dave Sabuda, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. I have three short items that I want to bring to the Council's attention. I'd like you to turn your budget book to page 71. 71. In that, on that page, that would be the DPW Highway Department, 101-440, page 71. If you look at line item 101-440-981.000, capital outlay, you'll notice to the far right that there is nothing appropriated in that line item. There are, this is where the first change that we need to make here. There are three pieces of equipment that were approved by Council in August and September of '21 that needs to be added to the budget. The total value is $269,252. To refresh Council's memory, there was a motion 21-476 for a Cryteal 14-foot dump truck. Then there was a motion 21-451, there was a Ford F-550 dump truck with plow and spreader. And then there was motion 21-475, a 2022 Freightliner tandem axle piece of equipment. That, so in total, those three pieces that were committed to, $269,252 in that spot there. Any questions?
Yeah, I just want to add something, Controller. So for those in the audience and our Council members, I had a conversation with the Controller about this. We are not adding necessarily anything to the budget. There's nothing being added to the budget. It's just this was a miscalculation, I guess probably the best way to put it, when he was adding all the different numbers. But we had approved it at our previous Council meetings for these particular items for DPW. So we're not approving them right now. It was just, I guess, a calculation typo, if you want to call it.
Well, no, we're adding them.
Well, we're adding them, yes, to the budget.
We are adding these two to the budget. The next one will be an adjustment.
Right.
You're a step ahead.
But what I'm saying though is, it's not like we are approving these items right now. These were previously approved.
Correct, right.
But just when you were filling everything in, you missed it.
Right, absolutely, yes, yes, absolutely. I was unaware of these three.
Now, does the bottom line here of 2.958.385 change?
Yes, it will go up. It will go up by $269,252.
Is that that number?
No, I don't, I don't, sir.
So I got to add that?
Yes, sir.
But at the final budgets that he gives us, obviously it'll be all included.
Oh, yeah, when you see the final resolution, it'll have all the changes. The final resolution coming to you will have all the changes that we've made over the last four meetings.
Okay, beautiful.
All right.
Any other questions from Council members?
That's a good one.
Okay.
Okay, next page would be page 58. Page 58. This would be the Building Maintenance Department. Here, I do have a, I have a typo. On page 58, at the top, you'll see the line item salaries. You'll see the number 431,000, 064 in the recommended column there. Does everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, that is overstated by $38,764. That is my fat fingers, I typed the wrong number in. And the number should be 392,300.
What line is that?
First one.
First one.
101, 265, 706, 000. It's currently in your book, it'll be 431, 064.
Got it.
Okay, that's going to come down by $38,764 to a new number, 392,300. That's my mistake. I typed in the wrong number, picked up the wrong line.
Okay, Controller, when we get the final budgets, I'd ask for this with a previous Controller, if you can still do this, and I hope you can. All the different changes that we've had as Council members, when we've gone back and forth, and let's just use a hypothetical number, you had $100,000 for something, and went back and forth between both of us, we agreed we'd make it to 120.
Yep.
Can you have that 120 being read in the final budget so we can see what changes have been made?
Can't do that.
Why's that?
Because, first of all, the resolution will be in summary form.
Right.
All right, so you'll see personal services, you'll see operational expenses, and then you'll see debt. So when the final form that you have there, the final form that you have will not have the line item that you're looking for. Now, what I can do is I can give Council a new 81-page line item budget. After we finish here, we can do that. Okay, and I can highlight the...
The changes?
Right, and please know this, if you're getting your public hearing packet today, you'll see in there a communication from me regarding the, regarding the public hearing for the budget. And it'll have a cover letter and the draft proposed budget with all changes. And I summarize the changes in total for revenues and expenses in that letter. So you've hit approximately 50 line items, okay, throughout the process. So it's, I'm going to give it to you in summary. If you want me to highlight the line items that have been changed.
I don't want you to put in, you know, 1,000 hours for this.
Well, that's what's going to happen.
No, 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 then don't worry about it. But I thought if it's a matter of clicking one or two buttons and you could do that, it'd be great.
No, no, I can't, that, the software isn't built for that, sorry.
No problem, no problem.
But you will get a summary, you will get a summary of the changes, and that'll be in your packet coming to you this evening, I believe.
Okay, beautiful.
Okay, last, any other questions on the, on page 58?
No.
Okay, then the last item is this. In my, in my presentation to City Council, I had made the statement in one of my slides that we had 297 full-time positions. That is incorrect, and I apologize, please excuse the error. I failed to add the three elected positions in, the mayor, the clerk, and the treasurer. And I inadvertently added 14 part-time staff at the court. Just the way my formula was built, so the number is not 297, but 286 full-time positions. And that, Mr. Chair, concludes my presentation to the Council.
I'm going to use this opportunity here, 286 full-time positions. I'm just going to use this little opportunity just to make a little statement to the residents that sometimes will ask, you know, different wants, I guess if you want to call them, or wishes that they'd love to have in our city as far as like what we can do. And I always talk about the limited budget when you compare our budget as compared to other cities. But more specifically, I want to point out that the city of Dearborn Heights is the biggest employer in the city of Dearborn Heights.
Really?
Yeah, there's nobody else, so unlike a lot of other communities, they have all kinds of industrial and factories, hospitals, malls, hotels.
Even the school districts, we beat the school districts?
We are the biggest employer in the city of Dearborn Heights.
Wow, wow, wow.
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, you can include all the school districts, no, but...
Okay.
Four, I think it's even four.
Oh, four. Oh, okay, so you're getting...
And the second biggest...
You're getting a piece, okay, gotcha.
It's actually five school districts.
Okay, okay.
And the second biggest employer is Hype Athletics. So we really don't have much major money coming in other than just residential housing primarily.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But thank you for all your work, just an interesting factor.
It was, it was a lot of fun putting this together. I really enjoyed it, and I'm glad you guys came along with the concept and how this all worked out. You've got a budget in front of you, I'm thrilled.
Absolutely. So before we go to members of the public, is there anybody on the Council that has any questions? Yes, Council?
Two quick questions.
Sure, sir.
So the number of 297 full-time employees you backed out, elected officials, and then the, and that's why it's a lower number, is that correct?
Oh, no, let me repeat that. Okay, so I started at 297, that's what I presented to the Council at the beginning of this process. I added the three full-time elected positions. The mayor, the treasurer, and the clerk. So I add them in, gets me to 300, and then I had inadvertently, I had a formula error, and I had included 14 part-time district court people, and I'm sorry for that.
But they got backed out.
And I backed those guys out, and we're at, and I get you to 286.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, well, thank you very much to you and, yeah, I'm allowed, of course. Thank you very much, Controller, to you and your team for a job well done. We agreed on some things, we disagreed on some things, we negotiated some things, we went back and forth on some things, but with or without the agreement, I know there was a lot of work by your team put into this and putting this together. So, and even at the end with like two or three little mistakes, even though there was probably about 80,000 inputs in here, so, good job. I appreciate everything. At this particular point, I'm going to go ahead and go to members of the audience.
Hello, Rachel LePointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Did the full-time 286 include open positions as well as filled positions, or is that only the filled?
No, included the two, the two, includes open positions and the two new positions.
And it does not include City Council as part of the elected officials because they're part-time?
Correct.
Correct, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rachel. Anybody, any other members of the audience? Okay, seeing none. Next, Madam, Madam Dana? Anybody on Zoom that's looking to get on? I don't see any hands up, but just in case. I don't, okay. Okay, I don't see nobody on Zoom. So at this, is there anybody?
No, no, no.
Yeah, I don't see nobody that had, I've got it in front of me. Okay, so with no one on Zoom, we're going to go ahead and go now to our HR Director, Margaret Haslett. And she has a little presentation on employees for us. For those members of the City Council, there was a round pamphlet that was put on your chairs for today to go over some of the specifics for Margaret.
This is salaries, right?
Correct. Margaret, go ahead when you're ready.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Before we go through the personnel budget pages, I just wanted to do a presentation with respect to staffing, share some terminology, talk about why we look at full-time staff when we're going through this process, and just want to have some explanation of those things on behalf of the HR Department, and also just to educate all in terms of staffing with respect to that. So it's a short presentation. So one of the first things I wanted to talk about is the components of compensation. So when we think of compensation, normally we're just thinking about pay in terms of wages and salary. But actually, when we're putting our budget together, we're looking at benefits and fringe benefits and pension. So really, in terms of total compensation, we're looking at all of those components as they relate to what we have to budget for when we're looking at positions. And so we're familiar with wages and salaries, but when it comes to benefits... Sorry, went too far. Well, I'm just trying to go back. I don't think it's going to let me. Yeah.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Okay, now go to the slides.
And then back up.
For those in the audience, we have a little technical difficulty, so just give us a sec.
Yep, I'm in slide two. Current slide. There we go.
Yes, somebody's trying to entertain us.
Please don't, don't do that. I've got a bad vision.
It's a simple, it's a simple PowerPoint presentation, really.
At the worst-case scenario, I'm just thinking out loud here. I mean, I don't see the specific PowerPoint in here, but you want to just continue with this these, or do you still prefer the PowerPoint?
No, I want you to have the visuals.
Okay.
Did you happen to click something down here?
Yeah. Oh, there we go. Well, now it's not mine's on, but...
Don't go.
Click on the screen down here, you mean to say?
There's usually function F8 or F7, so if we have function, what's it?
I just can't connect back to the screen.
That's what I mean, is they usually, like, do you hit a function F8?
Did you see you did click something down here in this corner?
Where you're touching.
Yeah, okay, that's, okay. Okay, she kicked herself off of, kicked herself off of...
One second, you see, they usually...
Share, 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 share.
Oh, it's wireless.
Yeah, 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 yeah. She kicked herself off the, the share. Oh, boy, oh, boy, oh, boy, oh, boy.
How about if you go to, except...
Yep, you got it. That's just the internet connection, this is, this is what sends, sends the signal off back there.
Yes, I know. It's just, I didn't have it as a...
I'm used to having, I wasn't sure we talked about it.
I know. I can't, I can't get your mouse, I have one.
See all the tabs?
Let me just get your mouse.
This is bizarre, she's not...
And they're all in.
It's got the connection.
So when I put them in, they're...
Sure, if you have, I think that might be helpful.
Is he coming in, is he coming in, Joel?
For his budget?
Where is your click share? We just loaded that.
He wants to move forward with the DTE project for the lighting. There's six new lights in one of the parks that they're paying for. But I, I need him to put it...
Looks like we're going to have to start from scratch.
So sure, he's paying for it, but we'll...
Take that one.
No, this is, see, okay.
There you go, you can use that.
Okay.
No, 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 this, this sends a signal up there. Here we go. I would change, they come with a different tax capture, that's one.
Get out of there.
Can't get around click share.
Did you re-download it?
It just came up there.
You just got it to come up.
It is moving away.
Is this your computer?
No.
I can bring mine.
Here we go, here we go. It's going to take a minute.
Yeah. What's the... Output cannot log on. Well, this is extending the meeting, unfortunately.
There is share, okay. There we go, it's coming up, there we go, we got it.
This is the slide you want? Yeah, let's go to benefits. Okay. Can I put it over here, or am I going to run into problems?
I think even if you just click the arrow, it will work.
Oh. There we go, okay. So sorry, we're ready.
Good job, we're fixing it.
All right, we'll go again.
So, so here we go. So with respect to benefits, we generally think of, in our, in our aware, we think about health insurance. But also, for the city of Dearborn Heights, we offer dental insurance, vision, life insurance, accidental death and dismemberment, short-term disability. And then we also have a discount program and telehealth. And then another category is fringe benefits. So fringe benefits are really, as we say, it's another way that we try to compensate employees that isn't directly dollars in their pocket. So in the city of Dearborn Heights, this includes paid time off, holidays, vacations, sick, bereavement leave, personal days, tuition reimbursement. Longevity, longevity is an incentive, the longer that you have to have worked here for a number of years. And then we pay you a longevity payment, which increases the longer you're here. The intent of that is to try to retain our employees. We have an employee assistance program and a uniform allowance. This isn't all of the fringe benefits, but it gives you an idea of what we mean when we're talking about fringe benefits. And then also, we have a pension. So that's our retirement benefit. After 25 years or so of employment, you have a guaranteed source of income for life. We follow Public Act 345 for public safety, public safety is fire and police. And then we have a general government employee pension, and our pension also includes retiree healthcare. So those are really great benefits to have on that end of the equation. And I want to talk to you a little bit about the Fair Labor Standard Act and about exempt positions and hourly positions. So exempt is the proper legal term, but we often think of that as salary. You know, these are salary positions. So what is a salary position? So a salary position, according to the Fair Labor Standard Act, has to have a certain level of responsibility, a certain level of pay to qualify under the law with respect to exempt. But also, the idea is because we're paying you to do the work, regardless of whether it takes you 15 hours, or 40 hours, or 65 hours, you know, we're paying you to do the work, that's what the salary is about. Therefore, those positions are not eligible for overtime. And then we have non-exempt, or what you think of in terms of hourly, is the phrase that we're usually more familiar with. And for hourly, the pay fluctuates based on your hours worked, is directly related to the number of hours that you worked. And positions that are hourly or non-exempt are eligible for overtime, or something that we refer to as comp time. So how overtime works would be any hours worked over 40 in a defined pay period. As an employer, we define the pay period. Is that Monday through Friday, is that Tuesday through Saturday, whatever the timeframe is that we define, 40 hours within that is straight time, any time over 40, then per the law, an employee is eligible to be paid one and a half times their normal hourly rate. So what is compensatory time or comp time? Compensatory time are hours in lieu of the overtime pay, again, earned at one and a half times the hours worked. So if I work two hours of overtime, I'm scheduled, I'm an hourly employee, 40 hours, I work 42, I could have two hours of overtime, which would be paid at time and a half of my hourly rate, or I would be earning comp time, which would be at one and a half times the hours that I worked overtime. So two hours of overtime would equate to three and a half hours. In many of our collective bargaining agreements, we have comp time. We deal with the overtime that is structured in how we staff, especially in public safety area, in the police and dispatch and in fire, through comp time. And then this term, full-time equivalent, you'll hear me often say FTE. What does that mean, full-time equivalent? So that is a calculation, again, based on what do we consider a full-time position? And so according to the Fair Labor Standard Act, we're looking at 280 hours. And how we get that is based on a five-day work week. If you work 52 weeks in a year, that's 260 workdays, times eight hours is where we get the 2,080 hours. And some of our positions fall into that. We also have a four-day work week here in the city of Dearborn Heights. That equates to 206 workdays, again, four days a week times 52 weeks. And then in terms of hours, 206 days at eight hour, at eight hours a day equates to 1,872 hours. And so some of our challenge with those positions that are four-day work week are that we aren't at 2,080 hours, although they're considered full-time, they're at 1,872. And that does have an impact on wage for them, for our employees. Okay, and then we also staff in a part-time capacity. So we have temporary part-time, which think of that in terms of time limited. We limit our part-time to 28 hours per week. Generally, they're not eligible for benefits, so no medical insurance, no dental, no vision, no paid time off, and limit it to 180 days, which is approximately 25 weeks. And then we have what we refer to as regular or permanent part-time. And some of these positions exist in the library, they exist in the court, and a couple of other places. Again, limit it to 28 hours per week, not eligible for benefits, and may continue indefinitely. So we have some positions people have been part-time for years. Okay. And then our collective bargaining agreements, we can, through the negotiation process, modify or enhance the standards under the Fair Labor Standards Act. So for example, we can determine through that process that overtime is going to be earned not after 40 hours a week, but after eight hours a day. We could also negotiate and determine that we want part-time positions to be eligible for benefits. So we start with what the law is, and then we can't go against the law. We can't have people work 45 hours and not pay them time and a half. But we could enhance the law, we could do more than what the law requires us to do.
Quick question, are all, all labor unions in collective bargaining agreement, are they available, is that available to them?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand your question.
All the, all the unions that we have, the whatever company we have?
Yeah.
Are they all, is that, is that available to them in the collective bargaining where they can negotiate overtime after eight hours?
Yes.
Everyone?
Yes. Okay, and then the other thing that I wanted to talk about is how do we determine how to set the pay for a particular position? Okay, how do, how do we make that determination? So we start with looking at what the job consists of. And so here are some of the factors. Scope of responsibilities. What's the level of decision-making in terms of independent decision-making? What's the impact on the organization that that position has? And then what kind of skills, content, knowledge, and abilities are required to perform that job in a successful capacity? Does, is the position required to supervise? And supervision we define as accomplishing work through others, as opposed to doing tasks yourself. And then what's the nature of the tasks that that job has to do? Complexity of tasks. Is it straightforward, I have three steps to follow, 10 steps to follow, they're the same steps every time I do it? Or could it be a multiple-path process in which I'm given discretionary decision-making about how I'm going to do it, what order I'm going to do it, and how, how I'm going to achieve the maximum outcome? So the more straightforward, the fewer steps involved in tasks, then the less complex the tasks, and the less complex the position, the greater the scope, the larger the responsibility, the larger impact on the organization, then the more complicated the position is. And those are some factors that we look at, we always start first with the job. Okay, and then how do we determine what are the next factors we look at? Well, we have to look at the market rate, you know, in terms of what are positions being paid for, similar to other organizations. And then we have to have what is our pay philosophy? We don't often talk about this in the compensation realm, certainly not in the public sector. Nonetheless, you know, in terms of the corporate world, what's the pay philosophy? Are we going to pay below market? Are we going to try to pay at the market? Or do we want to lead the market in terms of where we set our compensation and how we're able to afford doing those things? And then, of course, the last part has to do with our resources. What is our ability to pay with respect to that? And then for, let me just go back one. And then also, for us, we're looking at other public sector entities. What are other cities of our size, our tax base, those kinds of things, so that we're trying to compare similar types of organizations in terms of how, how we try to benchmark going forward. We certainly saw, you know, you remember in the 1980s when, you know, the dot-com era really came along? We saw incredible increases in pay for technology. And once the bubble busted after the early 90s, then we saw a lot of those compensations come back down. So that's why market factors can impact how we're paying positions. And then what's the role of human resources in the whole staffing arena? Right? So in totality, we're trying to determine, are we really increasing or decreasing the number of positions that we have? So in terms of full-time equivalency. And then once we have the approval, once we have those budgeted positions approved, going forward, we're tracking where are we in terms of vacancies, recruiting for those positions? And if we have a need for a new position, where does that compare to how we're currently staffed? What's the process for that? So I think in, in the past, for us as an organization, that responsibility was dispersed across the organization. Different directors were responsible for their individual departments or individual areas. So what we're trying to do now is really coordinate that so that we have an understanding of how that staffing really impacts the entire organization by looking at what the role of HR is and trying to track those things and stay on top of them for us. And then we have the personnel budget sheets, which we're going to go through in just a moment. So I wanted to talk to you a little bit about, you know, the, what we're looking at here. First of all, we wanted to focus on what the full-time equivalent was in the funded budgeted area. This has really been a challenge. We don't have a position-tracking program, as, as... We don't have a position-tracking program, as is often the case in informal ways of tracking, where based on who was the last person who held that position? And if the person is still employed with us, then that can be really difficult to try to track, to figure out, well, they're still here, what job are they in? Many of our positions are similar in their pay, so that's not necessarily distinguished. And then in our payroll program, at this point in time, we really haven't captured job titles, we really haven't captured people's career paths, and the different positions that they've held, at what point in time. So the program has the capacity to do that, we just have to figure all of that information out, and then start putting it into the system.
Yeah, so you're saying that, where it says personal budget sheets, you're saying there is not a program, or we have a program, but we're not fully utilizing it?
So, we have a program, we aren't fully utilizing it. Okay, so. And then, on the personnel budget sheets, we're just looking at the salary amount. So, that's the line item that we focused on with respect to those FTEs. So we aren't looking at any of the French benefit costs, or any of the health insurance, or those pieces, with the exception that we wanted to include longevity. So in places, we included longevity, because we had broken that out. And we also are really trying to ensure that the personnel budget sheets align to the budget that Mr. Sabuda had prepared and shared with you. And then the last thing that I want to talk with you about is, in terms of what I refer to as the fluidity of pay. So in our organization, people's pay can change throughout the course of any given year. And that can happen because their pay increases are predicated on their anniversary date. So whatever date they were hired can trigger that. They can achieve longevity, they can achieve their eighth year of employment, and move to, you know, in many contracts, we have seniority pay, we give you a bump after six years, or after eight years. That can be a different time. You can also earn certifications, or you can have a change in your assignment that gives you a slight increase, a bump in your pay in terms of your hourly rate. And so with respect to that, on any given day, we can give you a snapshot of what that pay is, and you can look three weeks later, and that's not going to be the same number. And so, without my ability to verify where our staffing were last year, and where all those dollars are, I am not including the current salaries, because it was really an estimate. And again, we're trying to provide information to you that's as accurate as we possibly can. And we also had some accounting challenges, where positions weren't recorded in the proper funds, and many other issues that we had in terms of trying to verify all of that. So what I'm going to be sharing with you in terms of the personnel budget sheets, is telling you what our staffing was for '21, '22, and how does that compare to our staffing for '22, '23? And then what was the budget item for the salaries for that fund, for that department, for '21, '22? And what are we forecasting that cost to be for '22, '23? So that's what we're going to go through. Thank you.
Director, nice presentation. Appreciate it. So, thank you. So at this particular point, we're going to go ahead and go to questions. We'll go to questions first from council members, and then we'll move from there to members of the audience, and then from there, to members of Zoom. So, yes, just one quick second, let's just sit there and talk. Your situation.
Sure.
Yes, yes. I'll give it up.
Thank you, Margaret. So, Councilman, go ahead.
So, Margaret, just, if I'm understanding you correctly, what you're saying is, we're going to see the different positions, which is budgeted, with some qualifications, with some qualifiers?
Yes.
You went over those qualifiers.
Yes, yes.
Council chair, can I get a little bit of space on those comments?
Go ahead.
So, you know, in the past, you know, we've had, basically, anybody rotating a point to a certain...
You got the microphone. Sorry. Sorry. Okay, so, right now, just to give you an example, so we're looking for an IT director. So what the HR director, Margaret, she got three IT directors from three different cities, and herself, so the four of them were in the interview process, just to make sure that we have the right person. So basically, so Tarek, you know, he knows the situation, the cities, and so he basically said, okay, this is the kind of person we need for the city of Dearborn Heights to move us forward to be IT, I would say, I mean, tack, I mean, savage.
Up to date.
Yeah, up to date, or to propel us into the century that we're in. So basically, they knew exactly what needs to be done in the city of Dearborn Heights. So those are the questions that were asked of an IT director. So we all know Mr. Sabuda is not going to be here, obviously, you know, he's temporary. So he was part of the next process for a comptroller. So he knows right now, more than anybody, what the comptroller needs to be, and what kind of information is, I mean, this, the last, you know, was six months during the budget, you know, a lot of discussions with the council, ourselves. He knew exactly what needs to get done, you know, with the city, and based on all your recommendations. So he took that, and basically, that's what he was asking on the question for the comptroller that we'll be bringing forward. So yes, I agree with Councilman Conston, we are looking for highly qualified people for the positions that we bring in for the city, you know, just to make sure, you know, everything is done correctly.
Thank you.
And just to bring the residents up to date, what the mayor is referencing there is, we had previously shared IT with the city of Dearborn. It was called Dearborn IT. And, you know, they did a pretty good job, but the challenge was, obviously, they were more involved with Dearborn's, and they were not able to provide us with a lot of services that we needed. So the mayor's made a decision, well, first of all, the city of Dearborn made a decision to quite drastically increase the cost to us, and based on that, it was way cheaper for us to have our own IT department, like, way cheaper, as in like, two and a half times cheaper, I think it is.
Six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, $600,000 in savings. So we're going to have our own IT department, somebody who will be completely focused on our stuff. And for those that have dealt with IT in the city of Dearborn Heights, they would know that we are in Fred Flintstone stage of IT, and there's a lot of work to be done, so I'm glad that we're bringing in somebody to just work on our stuff, and our stuff alone. Go ahead, Councilman.
I want to thank the administration, our HR director, our comptroller, all the directors, the chief of staff, for a job well done. I've never, you know, I've been through a few budgets now, and I've never had one explained to me like this. Just absolute...
And the presentation.
And the presentation, and speaking with our HR director, and her insights on everything, just a marvelous group of people, and I thank you. But I've got one question, maybe to our comptroller, maybe, and it's a budgetary question.
Go ahead.
So, we're coming close to our budget, end of budget last free year. So there, the money that was budgeted in, like, say, the council, we had, I believe, $35,000 in our law.
Yep.
Can, is that money still available to use or not?
Okay. Great question. If the work is performed before June 30th, and the invoice comes, say, in July, August, September, we will apply that invoice for the work in June to the old appropriation. Now, if you want to move that, so whatever the remaining balance is, what you would have to do is then appropriate, through budget amendment, to move forward that appropriation, if you felt the need to do that. I can certainly tell you, when we evaluated each and every account, we tried to take into consideration that type of situation. Are you going to do it before June 30th? And that's how you get your projection numbers.
The reason I'm asking is because, you know, it's not going to reuse it on law, but I was taking a portion of that money and maybe buy some, either new tablets or laptops for this room, for whomever sits here. And then whatever balance is remaining, can go back into the general fund, since we're not going to be having that line item anymore.
Right. And remember this, let's say, at the end of the day, you don't do anything for a period of time, two, three months ago, when we, when the budget, or when the financial statements are then closed, when we close the books, what happens is, the excess revenues over expenses, or the excess expenses over revenues, will then roll to the unrestricted fund balance, or if applicable, the restricted fund balance. So you can then reappropriate, if you want to, at that time.
So, like, if I decide I wanted to put up something in to buy seven tablets for the next council meeting?
Council chair, I know where the councilman's going with that, since I got your email. One of the things I was actually waiting for is, we're waiting for an IT person to come in, and because, one of the worst things to do, as somebody mentioned in the interview, is to go, let's say, to, I don't want to mention stores' names, but this store, you get a laptop from this store, and another department goes to another store...
Yeah, you want it to keep all together, and compatible.
Exactly. So, yeah, so one of the things, based on your email, so I'm hoping within the next week or two, I can reply back to your email in an intelligent way. I need to figure out, you know, what we're going to do with any equipment that we receive from today moving forward, to make sure it's compatible with everything that we're doing.
Well, yeah, I want to be able to use, take a laptop from here, if somebody needs it someplace else, just take this one and go over there.
Yeah, so give me a couple of weeks, councilman, and I'll give you a better...
That's not a problem.
Thank you.
I just don't want to lose that $35,000 just sitting there.
It's already spent.
It's already spent.
I'm just kidding. On the roof.
On the roof. Well, I could live with that, too, but...
Well, we'll see what we can work out, councilman.
Okay. Councilman Wenzel, go ahead.
That was my question, has any of that 35 been used, $35,000 been used? It sounds like it has, or are you joking around, or what?
What line item are we talking about?
The $35,000 legal fee for city council.
We had that in the last year's budget. Hopefully, we all need it.
So, one point, Mr. Sabuda, a while back...
Do you have an account number? Is it in the mayor's budget?
It'd be with the city council's budget specifically. So it'd be page 25.
Okay, so when I look at page 25, it is not there.
It's not on this one, but it's on the last year's budget.
I have last year's of plan.
Well, at the end of the day, I would have expected that to carry into this, into this presentation.
We can find out for you.
Because I asked about that, we didn't have it.
So...
Otherwise, it'd be Corporation Council 40.
Okay.
We, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I think to answer your question, the last time I checked, we had not spent the legal fees for the city council lawyer. As you know, we didn't continue, we finished the project ahead of time. However, as you are all aware, there have been various unexpected expenses in this fiscal year that you have already approved for, that weren't budgeted for. Those include the expenses with regards to the floods, as well as the improvements on the city hall roof.
But those take budget amendments, though. And we didn't do a budget amendment to take that money out of that account, I don't believe.
Okay, so the line item is on page 40. That's where you have to look, on page 40 in your budget book. Page 40.
I think I know where Councilman must go.
Okay, please, please.
Find that money.
Okay, at the end of the day, what happens here is this, is, on the line item itself, to answer your question directly, we've spent $5,642 on that line item. So out of a $35,000 appropriation, $5,600 has been spent, and we're projecting that that's all that's going to be spent for this fiscal year. Now, when you look at the budget in total, okay, from all the revenues versus all the expenses for general fund, I have to remind the council, we're overspending by $2 million annually. That goes back to the presentation that we had at the first meeting. So, we're overspending by $2 million, so when you look at that $35,000, or the difference between the $35,000 and the $5,600, it's not there. It's not there, because you're overspending in other accounts, and at the end of the day, we're projecting a $1.9 million expense over revenue for fiscal year '21, '22. All right? So, it's gone.
What did they spend the $5,600 on?
I would have to look, get back to you with that answer.
Isn't that a restricted fund?
No, 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 it is not, no. No, sir. It's been appropriated for legal expenses.
For legal expenses for city council?
Sure, yes.
It's, what it was brought in for at one particular point was, in the event city council has any type of legal questions, et cetera, et cetera, that they feel, and I'm trying to be objective as possible here, that they could get a completely objective answer from a counselor that is not directly connected to the mayor's administration, so they could give an objective answer. That was the purpose. I was against it at the time, but just FYI.
It's not in the next budget, right?
That is correct.
Council chair?
That is correct.
Okay, I got, now, in the city, we have X amount of open positions, probably 20 open positions between all the departments, I assume, right?
I think 18.
18. Now, and that's been for last year, how much was that money that we budgeted for and didn't spend of those 18 positions?
So, that can be a difficult number to achieve, because it's not necessarily that it's been vacant for the whole year, and that also, when we have a vacant position, sometimes it's because a person's been promoted and moved into another position. And so, it would take us quite a bit of work to try to get a number for you related to that.
It's pretty substantial, though, at least half a million dollars, I assume, in savings?
It would depend on what the positions specifically were.
Forty thousand, and 18, and that's 72, 720,000.
It also went to overtime.
Yeah. Seems like it'd be a lot of money.
Seems like it would. But often, we find that that is not the case. Again, it depends, most of the positions that are open are entry-level positions, so that's the lowest-paid position that we have in any particular union with respect to that.
That's what I figured on, 30, $40,000, that's how I remember it. On the 20th District Court, the budget, you know, what's budgeted for, and then when it shows the salaries, there's a $91,000 difference, and it doesn't show the judges' salaries. And I doubt if the judges' salaries are 40...
They're not paid by us.
Okay, it's okay. If you would allow me, if we could go through the personnel budget sheets, if we're prepared to do that, then when I get to that, I can explain what you're saying there.
Yeah, I mean, I was wondering why there was a $91,000 difference. Yeah.
Are we ready?
Okay, and then, one other thing is, now, I know we hired a HR specialist. Can you give us a job description, qualifications, or what the HR specialist does that you're not able to do, or something, or...
I certainly can. Do you want to, that's going to be about the fifth one in.
Okay.
Do you want to wait to, okay.
So, Margaret, I just want to make sure I understand you. Are you suggesting you want to go through the personnel pages yourself, right now?
Yes, that's what I thought was the expectation.
Okay, no problem.
That it was going to go through each one.
No, I was just sure that the first part was the main part of it. Okay, no problem. So, but there was something, Councilman Muscat, that we also, Councilman?
The reason I brought up that $35,000, I didn't know, I'm not assuming that we just go ahead and spend it. I just want to know how that works.
Right.
And that's the only thing, I just wanted to see how that worked.
Great.
Because if it was available, and it's just going to roll over, then I'd like to use a portion of it. But if not, I'm okay with it.
And I want to just give the council a memory jog regarding the judges. Please remember, the judges are state employees. They are not local employees, number one. Number two is, we only appropriate for, and we're fully reimbursed for, their portion of the salaries that are run locally. And that runs $91,448. And that's the same amount of money that we spent in 2021, appropriated in 21, '22, and then requested in our recommending for appropriation in 22, '23. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is an amazingly heavy microphone. I am surprised at that. Okay, so, we'll start with the mayor's office. What I try to do is put these in chronological order with respect to the account numbers, as they align with the budget, to try to ease our review of them. So what you have for each department is you have a cover page that summarizes, and then you have a backup page that gives you a little more detail. So to start with the mayor's office, in the current year, we were budgeted for 3.5 FTE, and for the future year, going forward, we're looking at 2.6. And if you look at the next page, it gives you the detail of that breakdown. So our mayor is still going to stay as a full-time position, and our chief of staff. But with respect to our executive secretary, we wanted to more accurately capture that we're actually sharing that position with another department. So you will see a portion of that position will show up in another department, which I believe is the ordinance department. And then I have a note on there for us at the bottom with respect to the director of And then I have a note on there for us at the bottom with respect to the director of grants and compliance. That position was eliminated, the employee was assigned to the CBDG, and so that's why you see the reduction in terms of what the FTEs are. And then this is my intent, to go through each group and try to explain to you that that's the change in the staffing, okay?
Director? I'm the director of grants and compliance, the proposed budget is $108,939. What exactly is that for, since we don't have anybody in that position any longer?
Those were notations of mine that I meant to take off of here as I was trying to add things up and make sure that my numbers were correct. You'll also see a $33,882 off to the side, same sort of thing. Sorry, I thought I had removed those.
Councilman, go ahead.
Very quickly, so, and then the executive secretary, the other half is paid for out of the water fund, is that correct?
No, that's charged to the ordinance department.
The ordinance?
Yep, that position is shared between those two.
So it's one full-time position there, probably more than half your time is on ordinance and compliance.
So, well, I'm not sure about complaints, but our allocation for her is that 60% of her time and wages are charged to the mayor's office, 40% is charged to the ordinance. David's very precise, it's actually 38%, but I rounded for us, okay? Okay, okay, so the next is our city clerk, and again, we have no change in terms of our staffing there. We were staffed with four positions, we plan to continue to be staffed with four positions. We have a city clerk, a deputy clerk, and two clerical staff. Any questions?
City clerk, deputy clerk, got it, go ahead.
Then we move to the comptroller's office. We have six positions, we're not making any changes there, we're continuing with six positions. The breakdown of those positions are a comptroller, a deputy comptroller, and then we have four clerical staff. Okay, and then human resources. So human resources, we have two positions, we're continuing with two positions, and then when you look at the detail, here's the difference. So we still have a director, but we've moved from having a clerical position to having an HR specialist. So I made a notation there that that's a reclassification from a clerical one position to a professional salary position. When I joined the city at the end of October, and you may recall that our director had given us notice, and so it was time for her to leave. Also, our clerk retired a little bit early, I think she had planned on going at the end of December, but I didn't take it personally that she left as soon as I got there. And then we also had some part-time help, and you know, part-time isn't something that we report on, that comes and goes with respect to that. And so when I looked at what was required of the director of HR in terms of health insurance, retiree, healthcare, pension requirements, that this position needed to supervise in addition to labor relations, recruitment, and all the other things that needed to occur, and where we were in terms of our ability to maximize what that paylocity program, our payroll system is, to save time, to be efficient, we were nowhere near where we needed to be. And so I made the determination that a skilled person moving into the HR department would most maximize our ability to make positive contribution to this organization, to take us from where we are to where we need to be. And so, the individual who's serving in that role also has an information system technology degree and background, and a thorough background in the benefit and payroll areas. So a big assist in terms of having a backup for the payroll position, and for understanding all of the complexities with respect to health insurance, how do we comply with the Affordable Care Act, all of those pieces, so that those things would not be my responsibility, and that I would be able to move into the labor relations role, which had really been delegated to our attorney, our labor attorney. And when I looked at our contracts, I felt that there were things in terms of managerially that maybe hadn't been understood, in terms of how to find a balance to make sure that employees have a voice and say in terms of what their job assignments are and how transfers work, and where's the balance for management to also have a say in that, because sometimes a transfer is necessary to facilitate in terms of personality conflicts, or just talents, or just sometimes people need a change of pace in order to re-energize their enthusiasm for working for the city. We don't have the ability to do that in any of our labor agreements. And so I saw that as a big challenge, knowing that our contracts were coming up to be expired, and that we are in a situation where recruitment is really important, and our tools there are pretty limited. And so I talked with my supervisor, the mayor, and made the recommendation to fill that position in a different capacity, and I got the support, and so that's why we have that position there.
And the program you, councilor, the program that you talked about that we can more fully utilize, that's paylocity, right?
Correct.
It's a powerful program. Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't the previous clerk going to be reassigned, taken out of HR? Or services that were needed?
I think, I'm not sure, there might have been something proposed in terms of the bargaining process.
I understand that she was going to get transferred, and she didn't want to go to a different department, so she retired.
Oh, okay.
The council chair, okay, can I answer that question?
Yeah, go ahead.
She retired, she did not, was not getting transferred anywhere, she retired, councilman.
I talked to her, she said that they were being transferred, I'm just saying what she.
Well, no, I can tell you, I have the letter, so she retired.
Okay, all right. Now, not to, you know, say anything, but the HR specialist, is that someone that you worked with before?
Yes. I worked for the Romulus Public Schools, community schools, Romulus Community Schools.
What position did they hold there?
Payroll benefit person.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the treasury department. We're not looking to make any staffing changes there. We have a treasurer, a deputy treasurer, and then four clerical support.
Councilor?
Yes, councilman.
Are we going to add one other person for the reconciling of the bank statements, or is that?
That's something I don't know.
Here's a new department, information technology, we're starting with a director. We have budgeted for that position to be $115,000, that's the top. We actually advertised for that position to be between 90 and 115, so we'll look at what the current pay is of the candidate that we want to move forward and make an offer accordingly. So that's the most that we would be paying for that position. Cable TV, so we have a TV program manager there, again, one position from the prior year. This move had happened in the middle of the year, I believe, starting in July, that we had moved into the TV manager role. This is a civil service position, and the civil service process was not followed in a timely manner, and so we had to make an adjustment there. And then we were, when that came to my attention in December, I put a process together, and we facilitated the civil service, including recruiting subject matter experts to help assess the skill and video technology skills of the candidate pool that we were able to generate. And then in the end, our current person was the candidate that rose to the top that we offered the position to, but we do now have a list with two other candidates on there if for any reason we should lose Ms. Keller in the next two years.
Mark, who are the TV programmer and the manager, who are they?
It's one person.
Angela. Is it?
Stan and Angela.
Okay, they are, who are they, they are? Stan, which one's Stan?
The gentleman that's usually.
No, I know, I know who he is. Is he the TV programmer?
No, no, he's a part-time position.
Okay.
And so I'm not reporting out on part-time positions.
Between the both of them, it's $47,000?
No.
How's that work?
No, it's for the... So that should all be on one, the TV programmer was the position that was from the prior year, the TV manager is the current position, it's one person, one position.
And that's Stan?
For $47,000.
And that's the only one getting paid?
That's not the only one getting paid, that's the only full-time position.
Okay.
So the other positions that help us with that are part-time.
Angela would be part-time?
Pardon?
Is Angela part-time?
No, so, Ms. Keller is the full-time TV production manager, and then in that area of TV production and media relations, the other positions that help us with that are part-time.
And that's Stan?
Yes.
Stan, and is that combined, all those salaries is 47?
No, the only salary reflected is the salary for the full-time position.
Where does Bob Amcraft fall in here?
He's a part-time position.
He's one of the part-times, we have two part-times?
Yep, we have, well, three, actually.
Is that in here?
No, I wasn't reporting out on part-time positions.
Oh, okay, all right.
I was just reporting out on full-time positions. Okay. Next is the recreation department, and we have five positions in the recreation department for this year, and five positions going forward. We have a director, a deputy director, we have a senior coordinator, and then we have two clerical staff. And then behind that, you will see the Richard A. Young Recreation, because we do charge one coordinator's compensation 100% to that budget, to that program. So that's why you see behind that coordinator, again, not making any change in the staffing in that area.
Councilor?
Councilman?
I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't mention the fact that we really do need a coordinator at Eaton Center. I think the seniors there are getting shortchanged, we'd like to bring that up. I'm concerned about that.
Councilor?
Yes.
So the Richard A. Young, there's the salary, the 706 of the one person, and then the coordinator, those are two different people? Am I reading that right, or is it the, Richard A. Young is that, that person's salary is those two numbers combined?
So, what we have is, because it was one position, I felt confident that I could tell you what the current salary was. And so what you see in the '21-22 is the current salary, what you see in the '22-23 is the proposed salary, which you see is pretty much the same number. So no, it's just one salary, one position.
So, but there are two different positions, one is the, it just says Recreation, Richard Young, or is that the total salaries for that?
So, I have, we are charging one FTE of salary for a coordinator to the Richard A. Young Fund.
So on the prior page, 692, I'll figure it out, so I'll also.
I, so, I apologize, I do a cover page and a backup page, and maybe I didn't need to do that for those departments that were only representing one position.
That's the cover page, and then that is?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And the additional money is budgeted as for some other, maybe part-time or something?
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying.
There's two different.
Right, because the dollar amounts are different. Nope, I think that's just a typo.
It should be 44046, I believe.
Correct.
No, for both, both 41.
It's 4416528?
4117 is the position cost, that's what we have appropriated.
Oh, but the budget, proposed budgeted is 41165 here, but you're saying it's 4117?
Mistake on the personnel budget page, on this page.
Okay, so it's that.
There you go, you got it.
Got it.
That person has a degree in senior law.
Never again, shit, I thought he took that off. Okay. Okay, and now for the library, moving on, we have eight positions, full-time positions for the library, and we can plan to continue with those eight positions. We broke out the director, and then the seven librarians. The next department is TIFA, and you see staff administration there. We have budgeted for that cost as opposed to an actual director. Maybe you want to share anything more with that, or?
I'm sorry, what were you saying? My apologies, host.
It's okay.
So you have, what that is, the staff administrator, that's Mr. Roscoe. Okay, so that's what he is, and remember, we're paying him, and then we're getting reimbursed with the TIF. They're giving us that money back.
Paid him and we're getting reimbursed 100%?
Yes, sir. The TIF proceeds are paying for him, the capture.
Is that why it's in parentheses there? Oh, no, I put it in parentheses. Sorry about that.
No, you're okay, it's all right.
Now that reflects in the budget, right, that there's no money budget for TIFA?
No, it's in there, we went through that in our sessions, we went through the TIF budget, and.
He's saying it washes, basically.
What ends up happening here is his salary is applied to the 493 fund, and the 493 fund is funded by the TIF capture, the TIF tax capture. So, what ends up happening here is, we pay his salary, the TIF monies go over, the capture goes over to the TIF authority, and then they give us that money back.
So it's a wash?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a wash. Wooden nickels.
I wouldn't say wooden nickels.
Page break didn't happen.
Okay, good question, that was a good question.
Okay, and then for our community development, my page break didn't happen here, that's why this is on one page instead of two, normally you should have had two pages here. So what we had, this is our, I always get those initials in the wrong order. Community belt, okay, right, I remember, CD, CDBG. And so, we were staffed for last year, we had two full-time positions there. We had a director, and we also had a coordinator. And upon the retirement of the coordinator, we made the decision to staff that with a part-time position. And so going forward, the director's compensation is shared between this budget and another budget. You're going to see that show up in the water department. And so that's why you see for the director, we go from a 1.0 FTE to a 0.6 FTE, that's still one person, full-time person, salary shared between this department and another department. And then the coordinator, I put an asterisk there to show that because of the not working the full year, that's why you see a lower salary amount there than would have been originally budgeted. But again, we made the determination to fill that position with a part-time, and so that's why you don't see another position on here, because we are not reporting out on part-time.
Is that something we can get away with, a part-time position in a coordinator? I know our past coordinator, he was a very, very business man, and he can fill his shoes with a part-time person?
Yes, that's the recommendation of the current director. We also have two other part-time positions there.
Oh, we have three part-time positions altogether now?
Yes, yes.
Councilman?
David, is that, any of that money reimbursed to us from HUD, or is it all reimbursed?
Yes, that 60% is all reimbursed from the various federal grant programs that run through that fund, whether it's HUD, or it's CBG, or it's any other type of federal grant that we get. Yep, that's all going to get, we're going to get a piece of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and here's the next one, is the 20th District Court. So, this is where we had the positions budgeted for in terms that David had shared with you earlier. So if you look at the second page, okay, if you look at the second page with this. I include the judges, but there's nothing in the proposed budget or the salary line item. I just want you to know we didn't forget about them, but because it doesn't hit our budget, that's why you don't see dollars associated there. And then we have the other positions broken out with an asterisk next to our court clerk in terms of recognizing that those are really part-time positions. And again, David's already spoken with respect to that, but we already had this in place to share with you, so that's why there's an asterisk there with respect to the court clerks.
Director, people, the two magistrates, they're considered part-time, that's why they're not on here, correct?
No, they are, well, in terms of how their actual salary works, because they're paid by the state through the state, and so their salary would show up here in a part-time capacity, so that's why we don't reflect the dollars there.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, are you talking about the magistrate, or are you talking about the judges?
Magistrate.
Okay, the magistrate, they're contractual, okay, they're coming out as a contractual person in a different line item than the salaries that the judge lines up, and then the various full-time staffers. So, magistrates, yes, different, and they're paid like a contractor.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Chair. Can you explain once again what the 91,446, what is that?
Sure, under state law, what happens here is, we have two judges, and again, they are state employees. Each one, we, to keep it simple, to keep it simple, each judge, we front $45,000 for each judge, 45 for one, 45 for another, and we get reimbursed quarterly from the state for that. for that judge, for, for that $45,000. So it's a net zero expense to the city.
Yeah, it's budgeted on one page for 885, and then on the other one for, so there's two different numbers there. Which one are we using in the budget, the 793 or the 885?
Hang on, hang on. We're budgeting, let me get, let me get back to my, my page. That's okay. Okay, so we're appropriating $793,851 for, for the full-timers. Yes, sir.
20th District Court.
Yes, sir. Yep.
Counselor Chair. Look, I don't know if everyone knows this, but in the past, we've always had the head of probation also be a magistrate, and that was a full-time position. Yvonne Abraham got appointed to certain courts, so it's now two part-time positions. The magistrate is a contractual.
Moving along, looking at the fire department. We're, we had 60 FTE in that department. We're expecting to have 60 again for the upcoming year. When you look at the breakout of that, that gives us one chief. We have four in fire command, and then 54 firefighters and a clerical.
Counselor Chair, the firefighters, 54 come to 3,400, I divided that, that's 64,000. Is, is that beginning, and that's, on average, it's 64,000?
That would be an average, because that really, that really encompasses all the different places that they are in terms of their steps and other criteria that they have that move them up. But in totality, that's how many firefighters we have.
Some firefighters make more than 64 in some areas.
Correct, correct.
What about Lisa at the fire department, the one that does a lot of the grants and stuff like that?
So she would be in the fire command?
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to the police.
I just want, first one question for fire.
Oh, yeah.
The clerical, is that a union position?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Moving on to the police. So we have one slight change here in terms of a FTE that we're going to be sharing. And so when you look at the second page, our emergency manner, manager had been charged full-time to, that position was full-time. We're looking at that making a change effective July 1st to a part-time position. So that's the reduction that you see from 104 to 103.5.
See, I'm sorry, the emergency manager, half, it's a part-time position now, and then I didn't get the last part?
So July 1st.
Right.
Starting on July 1st, it's going to be part-time, that's why you see the reduction of 37.
For, for future purposes, Director, I've always been a proponent of, of police officers starting pay being higher. We're, I mean, we've got great, of course, pensions and everything else, but as much as we can focus on having starting higher pay for police officers, I think would be a good idea. So A, we can get the right number of police officers working for us. This is like eight that we're missing right now?
Seven.
Seven, okay. But also just because that type of a job, in, in my opinion, at least starting pay should be ideally higher based on what they put on the line as far as putting themselves on the line, the high stress of the job, et cetera, et cetera. So I've always been a proponent of that, and will continue to be a proponent of that. So whatever we can do, at least in future budgets, if we can keep that in mind, please.
Duly noted. Okay.
The emergency, I'm sorry, the emergency manager, this next budget, it's 37,502, is that what, is he going part-time? Is that half of what he was making before?
Yes.
Yeah, how about his hours? Is he going to, is hours going to be reduced or?
Yes, the hours would be reduced. Okay, moving on to building and engineering. So we're going from seven FTE to, to eight, and when you look at the second page, you see that we're looking to add an inspector. We have really had a part-time person filling in in that role, working almost at full-time capacity. And we have forecasted and requested through the budget that we fill that as a full-time position under that collective bargaining agreement. And then we have three clerical positions there that will be maintained. Moving on to ordinance. So again, in ordinance, we have one director. We are looking to increase in ordinance offer, officer. This is a new position that we've requested through the budget to go from four to five. And then with respect to our clerical, that 1.5, again, just being more accurate, this is a position that's shared with the mayor's office, so .4 to the ordinance department was .6 to the mayor's office, and that's where you see this come back for that one person's position.
I've got a question. Since you're the HR Director, would, would, does the city entertain, say someone wants to donate time, like volunteering to do a job, like say in ordinance? Is that conflicting with anything? Or is that something you had to look into?
That would be something I would have to look in. There would be several factors for us to look at if we had a current employee who wished to volunteer service in that.
My gears are spinning up here, they need some grease, okay? And, I'm just thinking.
Well, I guess you'd be Director probably no different than a lot of communities where they have volunteer firefighters, and I presume probably be no different.
They get paid.
They get paid?
Yes, they still get paid.
As a volunteer then.
Well, but it's not a full-time firefighter. My brother-in-law is a, is a volunteer fireman out in Fayetteville. They get paid.
Also, it's for free.
Okay.
If we had an employee who wanted to do that, then I'd have to explore.
Please.
Are you volunteering, also?
Bite your tongue, I just might.
Is this, Counselor Chair?
Go ahead.
The, the new, I think we hired a new, new ordinance officer, officer through the TIFFa, that's not on here?
So that is how we're proportionately paying for the new ordinance officer that we're adding. So you see we're going from four positions to five positions in the ordinance officer on the second page?
Now, Mr. Mayor, can, correct me if I'm wrong, now, this, the new officer that's paged through TIFFa, you know he's working a TIFFa area, is that correct?
Correct.
That's restricting us a little bit there.
No, it's not, actually.
Well, a little bit.
Big area.
Yeah, yeah, oh, for sure.
I get most of my calls over there.
Okay, then moving on to the highway department. Again, no change in the FTEs in the highway department, but on the second page, you will note that we've indicated that we do have two open positions. So in the light equipment operator realm, what usually happens under this collective bargaining agreement is that that's a promotion. So then someone who's working in a general laborer capacity moves into a light equipment position, and then what we're actually recruiting for is another general laborer. Then moving on to building maintenance. So again, no changes in terms of our staffing. We did want to make a notation here in terms of the director. So we have charged the director's compensation 100% to the highway department. So our director of DPW, who really oversees these three different areas, we're currently budgeting the salary for that position in one location. Oftentimes, you would see a position like this would actually be spread in proportionally charged to the different departments, but we are sticking with charging that to one area. But I just wanted you to know we do have a director, but that's why you don't see any dollars associated with that position there. We're not looking to make any changes with respect to that.
Counselor Chair. Go ahead. This is another one that concerns me, the superintendent only making 54,000. They're, they're basically a head of the department. That's, that's got to be the lowest pay of any department head that we have, I think. I think we should try a sharpener pencil up and give this person, whoever it is, some kind of, some kind of a raise. That's a, for heading up a department and only making 54 out of all of our department heads, that does, I mean, that's way below everyone. I mean, maybe, I don't know what their, their job requires, but I know a lot of what it does, and I think it's something we should look into, give them something on that. I don't know if that, that position's had a raise lately or not, but...
Counselor Chair, that's a union thing, so contract.
Art of negotiation.
Yeah.
Okay.
The superintendent falls under a union, you know?
Yes, so we have a, a union for our DPW supervisor, so superintendent and supervisor fall under a collective bargaining agreement. That contract is currently expired, and we're at the table negotiating with the group.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll look into it, give them some more money.
Well, thank you, Director. Is there any more?
Last one.
Last one, okay.
Water.
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 Favorite thing in the whole world is water.
Water and billing here, water and billing. So, so this, this was a...
Get some water here, I'll pick up some of the...
Absolutely a challenge. So in terms of our total FTEs here, right, 27 for this year, 27 for next year, but you see 27.4. Again, if you look at the second page, that's because we are charging a portion of the salary of the CDBG director. See, I can say it when it's in writing in front of me. The CDBG director's proportionate salary being charged to the water billing department, the water, the water and water billing department.
So on, on that one, Director, for water billing, if you recall, is part of the budget, I brought that up before. I, I think, you know, they are, in my opinion, greatly on, well, I don't want to use the word, greatly understaffed, but they're definitely understaffed. If we can, I'm not sure if it's right now, or later, it's obviously probably too late for this budget, but, but I think in terms of customer service, I think there should be more clerical people added there to have customers' calls answered. Not because they're not answering the calls, but I've stood by there, and it's just non-stop calls coming in, and one or two people answering the calls, it's just not enough.
Counselor Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, as, I don't know if we, if you remember, we talked about this a few months ago. So you know, when we go to get new water meters?
Correct, I'm sorry.
You know, we got to do some reorg in that area, so that's something we're looking at.
Yeah, I forgot about that.
Thank you.
And what I mean by profits, I'm talking about, we're charging us extra money for other cities.
Bless you. You're allergic to John.
Mr. Chair, just one last comment about the CDBG director in the water sewer fund. Remember, FEMA money is coming into the water sewer, and that's why he's, he's in that section there.
Right. Counselor Chair, Mr. Sabuda?
Yes, sir.
You worked in other cities, in, in other cities that have an elective treasurer, how much of the treasurer's office, they collect the, the money? How much of the water department is run, or not run, but the collection of that money is going by the treasurer's office?
So everywhere I've been, every municipality that I've been, the treasurer collects everything, whether it's not, whether it's, whether it's off-site, so for instance, a bank, but everything runs through the treasurer, whether it's water sewer, or taxes, or recreational receipts, everything runs through the treasurer, no matter what municipality I've been in. And, and Dearborn Heights is, is exactly the same way.
But like, let's say, Levonia, or wherever, or Plymouth, or Northville, how much does the treasurer's office run the billing and so forth of the water department?
Okay, so on the bill, let me think here, I'm just...
I think I got it figured out.
The answer is zero?
Yeah.
Zero? Okay, that they would not bill?
The billing department falls under the controller's office.
Right, here it does, yes. And sometimes it stands alone, sometimes it's, it's associated with the finance department instead of the controller's office, and that's just semantics. So, but, but usually the, I've not seen a, a water billing department with the treasury. I've never worked in that, that situation.
Thank you. So thank you, Director.
That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, good job. I know the council members have already asked a lot of their questions, unless somebody else has an additional question, I'm going to go to the audience next, and then we'll go to Zoom from there. You have your own outfit on, you have a little extra time.
Good, because I was going to ask for more time.
As much as you're lying.
I couldn't ask ahead of time because I wasn't pre, prepared, because we didn't have, have this ahead of time. Few comments I want to make. This budget year we're in right now, this time last year, for the Justice Center, they used to have a full-time custodian, part-time custodian. In this budget year, you approved two full-time custodians. In this budget, there's only one full-time custodian, there's two full-time custodians working as of right now. So I think that needs to be looked at, because it's one position short in, in here right now, because there's actually two full-time custodians working.
Can you answer that, Mr. Sabuda?
I'm sorry, sir, can you repeat the question?
Go ahead. Repeat it, please.
In the Justice Center, police department and court, there are two full-time custodians. Between the police department and the court budget, there's only one full-time custodian between those two departments.
I, I'm looking at...
So it's short one person, then the...
I have one full-timer at the police station, and at the court, I have, I have court reporter.
One position's missing.
No, no, I would, I would disagree, the individual that's going back and forth is, there's no position missing, and that person is being, what I recollect from my conversations with the district court is they're sharing that person with the police department. That's my understanding, and that was acceptable to the district court.
Well, there is Mike, who has been there for quite a few years.
Yep.
And the new custodian, Keith, who has been there three to four weeks. Ms. Haslick just hired him of, a month or so ago.
There we go.
And there's, so there's two positions, but this budget only shows one.
Well, at the end of the day, there, there are other open positions, and if, if need be, it's a budget, and if it has to be amended, we'll amend the budget.
Okay, okay, I just, I just noticed it was missing.
It's part-time.
No. Keith is full-time.
Well, I, yeah.
Okay, also, I am looking at the IT director's salary and the controller's salary. You have a budget for 115,000, I think that's a little high. And the reason why I say that is because Dearborn Heights has defined benefit program, a pension compared to mostly is their defined contribution or 401K or whatever. I think we can afford to pay a little less, 95 or 100, salary-wise, because they do not have to contribute towards their pension and use that money that you would put for a senior coordinator at Eaton Center, for another position somewhere else that I think we, that we could use. And also going through and going to, as far as the controller's salary goes, I went back through six months of minutes and six months of YouTube videos, and there was not one, one proposal to increase that salary from 80,000 to 115,000, I just want to bring that up. And one more thing is, I'm looking, and some council members up here in residents, they complain about the way the city looks, and that ordinance is not, ordinance needs to do more, this and that. Their ordinance director, he got $20,000 raise last year to work 32 hours a week. He doesn't even work 40 hours a week. Every time you ask him a question, he doesn't know anything, he always has to look into it. I think you should take that $20,000 away if he's not going to work 40 hours a week like all these, the mayor, the chief, chief of staff, they work their butts off, the clerk's office, treasurer's office, all these department heads work 40 hours a week, not him. I think he should have some money revoked from him. Thank you.
Counselor Chair, if you find somebody that can make less money qualification, hey, send them our way, because we posted it for months, that's all we got, so. If you can find an IT director that, that wants a job less than that, hey, bring him forward.
It was just an idea.
No, I know, but bring those idea, you know, bring a person, there's a lot of ideas out there, but we can't get somebody for that amount, we, we have to be competitive.
Okay.
But if you have somebody that's willing to take that haircut, bring him forward.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from the audience? Any other questions from the audience? All right, seeing none. Next is on Zoom, Vince, we're going to go ahead, if you could unmute yourself. And go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I noticed that you guys have been cutting in and out, so hopefully that won't happen. And I'm sorry, I didn't completely follow the entire meeting, because I wasn't here. But I do have good questions regarding the planning commission. Their budget of like $24,500, just page 76. Is there any monies allocated for them to record their meetings, such as the city council meetings are recorded? I don't, I don't know if that's a part of this budget, or what the request is, but in order to be transparent with our budget and everything, and the commission, I, I think there should be some monies allocated that way.
Okay, so, so on that one, I, if you recall, you emailed me, Vince, or I can't remember, wonderful man, you communicated.
We talked about, we talked about that, but I.
Right, so as, as I mentioned, if, if, I tell you myself, as, as a council chair, if there's anybody that brings anything forward as far as taping anything, as long as it doesn't cost us a crazy amount of money, I'm all for it. But at this particular point, the person that would have to bring it forward would be the particular chair for that particular commission. You could make a request to her, and if that's something she wants, and she wants to add it on our budget, I personally would vote yes on it, as I've done with the councils. As a matter of fact, today we had a meeting again, adding additional resources for accessibility to residents, to not just be able to, or have to join Zoom, where they can go on Facebook Live and be able to watch the council meetings, and read off of the website. But that's for our council, this one's eye control. For the others, I'm all for it. It would not start at the controller's level, it would have to start from the planning commission.
All right, well, I've asked the planning commission before, I've asked the mayor and the council to get these meetings televised, and it's falling on deaf ears.
Well, meetings, you were saying meetings, you're referencing planning, I presume, right?
The planning commission meetings, yes.
Or zoning, right?
Either, both.
Yeah, unfortunately, we have our corporation counselor here, I don't know, I don't have the answer as far as who would have to make that decision, but just presumptively, it had to be that particular chair of that particular commission coming forward to administration, and then they'd have to look into it. I personally, for one, having been one of the people, one of the seven that's in charge of the budgets, I'd have no problem approving that, provided the cost is not overbearing.
Okay, thank you. And one other thing, we're talking about an emergency manager. I don't think we need an emergency manager when we have a highly educated chief of police and a highly educated police commissioner that can do this job. Or also, the fire chief is also qualified to be an emergency manager. We have a position here that three other gentlemen or personnel can actually handle.
Okay, now, you, you, I don't know if you know, but in the budget, it's gone to half, half of the time that it was before previously. And number two, I do want to point out to you that during COVID, I do know for a fact that the emergency manager was probably put in triple overtime, you know, as far as during the COVID and during the flooding.
Yeah.
Trying to help coordinate. Yeah, so, so the thing that we do have, and I don't have the, the full answer, I'm just throwing it out loud here, you have to have an emergency manager in place so that when an emergency happens, somebody can take over instantly, and they have the infrastructure in place. If, let's just use hypothetical here, let's say I'm the emergency manager that they only call if there's an emergency. If there's an emergency and they call me, by the time I get my stuff together, that emergency is long gone. So they have to have somebody throughout the year. But keep in mind, and not to name specific emergency managers, but the one that I, I know that's specific position, he's working all week too, so he's not just doing nothing, just waiting for an emergency. He does have other duties that he does while there is no emergency in place, but when there is an emergency in place, that's when he steps in. Now, I'm not sure if, go ahead, Mayor.
So, that's, that's a good point. So we also have a lot of issues that we still have to iron out from, obviously, from the flooding, and also from, from COVID. So currently, we're still trying to track some of the money, you know, the FEMA stuff that we, the money that we paid, you know, because of the flooding. So the emergency manager is working diligently, trying to get some of the money back. And also with COVID, you know, we, obviously, we still, you know, we're still in the COVID phase, you know, he's still taking care of things, you know, with the Wayne County, and also at the state level. So currently, our chief is busy doing what, there's enough concerns over there that they're working with right now. I don't want to make any changes as of right now, so we need to get our city back on track. And so we still need the emergency manager, and as mentioned earlier, as of July 1st, we're going part-time, and because of, you know, because of that, because, you know, he, he was amazing, you know, we, we talked, and he actually volunteered to go to part-time, because, you know, we might, you know, face down on some of the responsibilities, so it was his recommendation.
Vince, does that answer your question, or do you have an additional question?
Yeah, no, that's fine. I mean, you're, you're talking about tightening the belt, and that, and like I said, I apologize for not getting to the meeting on time, but that was just one of my thoughts, and I was going to speak it and let you know. And I have a scratch of time, though.
Okay, but I, I do, I do agree with you on a personal level with taping the planning and the zoning commission meetings.
Council Chair, we're also, we're brainstorming a lot of best practices with other cities, and I'll check to see what other cities are doing, and well, again, if there's something best practice somewhere else, we're bringing it here.
You're talking about the videotaping?
Yeah, videotaping, whatever we can do.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Vince, but you know what, you, you know, start your process on something that you think is important, again, I'm all for it, email the chair of the planning commission and of the zoning commission, and we'll go from there.
Okay, I'll do that one more time.
Okay.
I think you're in.
Are you done, Vince? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can be. You got a question?
Vince, yeah, he, well, he, he mentioned something about, you know, the emergency manager, and I think something that our, our emergency manager did in the past was take complaints on garbage pickup. And now the new policy is, you don't call City Hall, you call the company, Priority. And I think that's a mistake, because we have no idea how many complaints or the problems there are, you know, if we, unless we rely on Priority to give us a list of complaints. I'm sure, I mean, I get calls all the time, so I'm sure you guys do too. But then we tell them, hey, we go, call Priority, they say, I didn't hire Priority, I hired you. You know, I'm, I'm complaining to you, and I'm not calling this company because I get on hold or something like that. They'd rather talk, they'd rather have their complaints to a Dearborn Heights representative instead of calling the company and complaining to the company. You know, a lot of people, oh, I'm not going to call the company, you know, they're not going to pick up my garbage, or dump my garbage cans upside down or something. I think that's something we should look into, complaints coming back to City Hall, so we can kind of monitor the situation.
It's not a good idea, Council Chair.
Right, so there's, if, I'm sorry, Mayor, so there's two schools of thought on that. One school of thought is that school of thought, but on the other hand, if everything goes through City Hall, then we pay Priority in the millions to do whatever they need to do, and then if we have people that are a part of our administration handling those calls, so let me give an example. John Smith contacts City Hall and says, hey, they didn't pick up my garbage, right? It sounds beautiful, because that's all that's going to happen, that takes 10 seconds. But the reality is, now John Smith, whoever it is that works here, now has to contact Priority and then put in that request, and he presumes it's all good, right? But then nobody follows up on it, why? Because he doesn't know if they ended up doing it for, for that particular, the person from the city doesn't know if they ended up doing it for that particular resident. So to me, for me personally, I'm speaking, I'd rather have them called directly to the company, they're getting paid to get that job done, and then only if they don't get the service that they feel that they deserve based on that call, then they could call us, and one of us can ramp it up to the next level. That would cut a lot of hours of human resources and time and effort, and I, in my opinion, that's the better, that's my opinion.
I'll tell you, from my experience, you know, when I take a complaint, and I would call, you know, Lee Gavin, and he would take care of it, and I'd call the resident, and it was taken care of, I mean, almost all the time. Now I'm getting people calling, they said they called, and days go by, nothing, nothing, nothing.
But then that's what they come back to you, and then we could let them know. That's.
Council Chair.
We're all having them come in.
You all set?
So there's, there's a few things here. There's, again, you know, when I said that at the last meeting, rumors, you know, there's a lot of stuff being, being load misinformation to the residents, you know, it's, it's huge right now. And I can tell you, there's, I mean, obviously, I don't want to mention names again with, with companies, you know, but in the past, the particular company was not reporting to us when they missed routes, you know, sometimes it goes two, three days. So for example, the company we're dealing with right now, Priority, I got, I got called, text yesterday, like 10 o'clock at night, you know, that Priority missed, you know, missed their trash. This morning, I got to, to the office, 7 something this morning, and I got an email from Priority, already telling me that they missed these, they're running half a day behind. So they're already on the ball, and the other thing, I want this stuff to go through, and so the council members can tell the resident, if, if they say that they called, which I know a few residents already that I've gotten called, I mean, it was, I don't know who they were, but it was, I couldn't verify the people that called me, it was restricted, so you know where that's going from. I was told that they called at a certain time, they called, and I said, okay, can you tell me what time? No, I can't tell you what time. I said, what day was it? Oh, I don't remember. So I need to know the time, the date that they called, and the reason why is because we can go back to Priority and say, hey, on Tuesday at 7 o'clock PM, a resident called, and they can go to their database, and they can find out, you know, if a person called, they can go back, everything's recorded. So we've never had this service before. The other thing, there's cameras in the trucks, you know, somebody says, hey, you know, Priority did this, and this, blah, blah, whatever. You know, I called, I called Priority, and I told them, I said, truck such and such, and this route, you know, this is what, what I got. So they went, they had a, they had a surveillance camera in most, most of their trucks, they actually had a camera in that truck, so they couldn't verify that no, nothing was done. So again, there's misinformation. So what I need, if anybody reports to the council, there's any issue, I need to know the time, the date, if there's a truck number, I need that information, because I can go to their manager. Their manager's here almost every day, talking to us, hey, is everything okay? I'm getting calls with the owner several times a, a month, asking me, you guys need anything, are we good, any residents concerned, and I share with them what Councilman Wenzel just brought up, and that's what he keeps telling me. The other thing is they're getting new technology, so every truck is going to have a tablet. So what that's going to do, the resident calls the dispatch, said, hey, my, my garbage was missed. There's trucks that are usually in the area, sometimes they work late, all they have to do is, they say, you know, at such and such street, you know, my garbage was missed. So the dispatch now will actually dispatch the truck, you know, on, on their iPad, they, they'll tell them, hey, such and such street, this address, the garbage is missed, and somebody will get to the address as soon as possible. If you call us, you know, let's say you call off hours at City Hall, we're not going to get to, we're not going to get to the call. You call on a Friday or Saturday, nobody's going to get to it until the following week, till Monday. But if you do call Priority, they're going to get their trash picked up a lot faster than when we actually get the call and call these guys. And what Priority's doing is they're tracking customer service, so they do have all the calls from Dearborn Heights, they break it down, and we can actually, I asked them for that information, they're going to give it to us at the next meeting, they are going to come down.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, we do have them scheduled, well, I'm sorry, take it back, not scheduled. I've seen the email from the mayor, and the email from Mayor, and he sees me on it, and directly to Priority, and they said they're trying to check, check their schedule, and then they're going to get a hold of me, and we're going to set an exact time for them to come in and, and address all of our concerns. So they are coming in.
Do they have 24-hour, say if a resident wants to complain at 11 o'clock at night on Saturday? Is there a 24-hour?
Yeah, they do have a website, you can go on their website, but there's, I don't know what, I, I got to go back and look at the number, but.
You know, a lot of people that complain are senior citizens.
Okay, but they, they do have a toll-free number that you can call, and I don't know if it's recorded line, but I know they're tracking every call that goes in.
They do answer, I've called for some residents at the 1-800 number, they do answer.
I hope it's a 24-hour recorded line.
Well, we can find, they're going to be here, I'm hoping, you know, next, next council meeting, if you guys schedule it, you know, they're, they actually proposed to come and talk to the council, you know, to come here on, whenever you guys want. I know, that's what I mean, is this, I've never had this kind of service, and we, for the year, I was a mayor last year, every month I was getting spreadsheet with hundreds, if not maybe thousands of calls every month on missed garbage.
We got the opportunity now to do a A1 top-rated job with our trash pickup, and stay on top of it too, I mean, let's make this, let's make this the best.
Well, that's what they're trying to do, they're, it's a, it's a great company, and I tell you, you've never had the service, they're here every day, almost.
That'd be, you know, if having no, zero complaints would be great, you know, I mean, that'd be.
Right. Okay. So, anybody else on Zoom? Vince, just to be nice to you, I'm going to give you another 30 seconds.
Thanks, I appreciate that. I, you know.
Cut out. Cut out. You froze, now you're down to 10 seconds. Nine, eight, seven, all right, go ahead.
Give me a break. You know, talking about Priority, I called there this morning because there was an issue on my street and the whole subdivision. I spent 15 minutes on the phone, it's not that hard to do. People just got to dial the phone number, it's, you know, spoke to a lady named Christine, she did a good job, the problem is solved. So I, I don't know why it's so hard not to call.
I, I agree with you, Vince, I think what's happening a lot of times is people are calling council members as the first call, and they really should call the company first to give them an opportunity to deal with it, just like I said at the last council meeting, when there's a problem with the resident, you come to the council meeting, that is just not the best place to start with, start with the particular department, and do not, you know, if you want to file a complaint, do not file it with the Facebook department of our city, and I'm being sarcastic, it's just, you know, there's, it's just the worst place to put it. Call the right company or the right department first. Complain all you want, Facebook, do whatever you want, no problem, but that's not going to get it solved, call the right people. But thank you, Vince.
Hey, you know, I just wanted to say, I was trying to make a suggestion with the emergency management, I know you guys have got your hands full, trying to get things turned around, I don't want to sound like I'm complaining, you know, sometimes I just don't, I'm not suave and daven air, but I know, Mr. Mayor, you got your hands full, and I, I would not want to be in your position right now. And I'm sure it's going to take a little while to get it straight now, so, but I appreciate everything that's going on, and thank you.
It, it's a, it's a work in progress, and, and I know firsthand, with many meetings and appointments and conversations with the mayor, there's a lot of work to be done, and this administration is, is, is working on it. I mean, there's, there's a lot of work to be done, when I say a lot, I'm, I'm serious. And changes are happening on, on a daily basis, going in the right direction. Okay, so, no other questions on Zoom? Anybody else here in the audience? So thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and you all have a good night.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.